All right, the time is now 9:00 AM and I'm gonna call the special meeting to order. We'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Good morning, welcome. So now we're on to item three, which is to interview the candidate. So each trustee has an envelope with questions and we're gonna have the questions start with trustee Sherman and we'll just go through. So we're gonna do quick, brief introductions of ourselves. So my name is Willina Oldperson, she/her/hers, I'm Yakima Blackfeet and Chair of the Trustees. And let's go this way.
Good morning, I'm Nancy Hobman's Vice Chair.
I'm Jen Vogel.
Cohen Mercer.
Keegan Witt.
Good morning, I'm Karen Sherman.
Hi, welcome to Missoula, I'm Meg Witcher, she/her/hers.
Hello, I'm Jeff Abgures.
Hi, I'm Grace Decker, she/her.
All right, so now we'll go ahead and start with our questions and we'll go over to trustee Sherman.
We know a bit about you from your resume and your cover letter, but many in our audience do not. Can you briefly tell us just a little bit about yourself, please?
Thank you, I would be glad to. And if it's okay, I'd like to share a little bit about my family and my educational experiences that have led me to be here with you this morning. First, I'd like to introduce my wife who's in the room, her name is Nicole and she was a kindergarten and first grade teacher before stepping away. And Nicole and I are high school sweethearts and have been married for 28 years and we have three wonderful kids, all adults now, so they're even more wonderful. Our oldest Noah recently graduated from the University of Montana Law School and is an attorney here in town. Our daughter Annie graduated from the University of Colorado and was accepted into PT School here in Missoula. And our youngest Simon, you might run into him at Tamarack where he's a server and host, but he is earning his degree in science education. And so, big reason for why I'm here today. I also want to talk a little bit about some of the experiences that I've had that led me here. And I want to start by saying that I think I represent a success story in public education. And my reasons for that are as follows. I'm one of four children and my parents divorced when I was four years old. They struggled with mental health and substance abuse issues from an early age until I was in fifth grade. I was in foster care, spent a number of years in foster care. In my formative years, was in at least 14 different schools before the age of 11. And I think those experiences are important, but even as I grew, there were moments in my life where I was homeless, living out of a car, lived in poverty, low socioeconomic background. I'm the first person to graduate college in my family. I was not an ideal student, at least a start. But I think what makes me different is that I had a group of teachers, coaches and administrators who saw something special in me, who saw potential, something worthwhile and something that had value. And they literally changed the course of my life. And I knew that I wanted to be in education. And at some point, I would hope to introduce you to my eighth grade English teacher and my guidance, the Guidance Counselor Secretary from Paulson High School. They took me in my junior year of high school and who I refer to as mom and dad today. They're probably watching, so I'll say hi, mom. But I think I represent what's right in public education. I have been profoundly impacted by the experiences that I've had growing up and by people who have mentored and supported me in all of those things. And so, that's where my heart is. I think as I started as a teacher, I gravitated towards leadership experiences and opportunities and have been an administrator for going on 21 years now. Thank you.
We know that you have experience working in a larger sized district in Kalispell, but would you be, you would be new to MCPS community. What would the first month into the job look like for you?
Well, I want to hit the ground running. And if it would be okay, I have a document that I'd like to share with the board, would that be okay if I brought it up and just pass it around? I think as any superintendent would tell you that a transition plan is gonna be key. I know the position that Missoula is in as far as the search process and would, I want to hit the ground running. I think there's an opportunity to maintain continuity. I'm not here to say that we're gonna do any of these big changes. Having looked through what you have developed for your strategic plan, I believe there's great opportunity. An opportunity to listen and spend those first few months, these first few days getting to know staff, letting people get to know me and building relationships. I think trust is paramount in all of that, as well as getting to know what the priorities for the board are. And so I just want to be able to support that good work that's already been going and happening in Kalispell Public School or in Missoula County Public Schools.
Thank you, this is a biggie one, so.
All right, Jeff.
What do you consider the three most critical issues facing superintendents and Board of Educations today?
Well, I think there's more than three, but I'll give you some of my top. First of all, I think recruitment and retention of staff is a huge issue across Montana. Being one of the lowest paying states for starting teacher wages in Montana certainly does not help. The cost of living, the cost of inflation, being able to support educators and other employees in the district is incredibly challenging. We have what I refer to as backbone employees for our organizations. There are bus drivers and paraprofessionals and food service workers and custodians and maintenance engineers. A group of people who, without them, we would not be able to operate the way that we do. So I think that's a huge part of it. Lack of teachers entering, teacher preparation programs is certainly significant. And so that's one of those areas that I think boards and superintendents are gonna have to look at. I think, I'm gonna just, I'll say fiscal responsibilities when it comes to budgets and how we're going to manage what we have in effective ways and support all of the initiatives and the things that we're accountable to and responsible for. When I think about education and what it used to be to what it is now and the responsibility that we have to provide meals for our students, mental health services, physical health services, social emotional supports, along with just education. It's a really big task for a board to wrestle with that and to look at how we prioritize our spending and the finances that we have. I think another one is just recognizing our diversity and inclusion in our communities. You know, we've certainly been impacted in Kalispell and I know Missoula has as well, reading through some of the information that was gathered in the search process. And so I see those as being three areas. If I were to add one more, it would be mental health of students and staff. Absolutely critical and important that we find ways to continue to support our staff and our students in that area.
Thanks. This next question is that we're asking that you give us some idea of how you judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent? And how would you expect the board to evaluate your work?
I think how I judge my own effectiveness is, one of the barometers I use is just the feedback that I get from our staff and administration. I think our, what I have going for me is that my colleagues find someone who they trust, who they can rely upon to make decisions, to support them in the work that they do. And a part of that is the goals that I set for myself, the goals that a board sets for its district and how you would evaluate me in achieving those goals. Very much in tune to being a part of moving a district forward in our goals and objectives and the things that we want to support. I also think that there's an opportunity to ask staff for feedback. I think if you look at climate and culture within schools and within the district, that can tell you a lot about your effectiveness as a leader. Do people feel valued? Do they feel trust? Do they feel that they're listened to? Do they feel that there is transparency coming from the administration, especially at the central office? I think those are our key ways that we can look at that. And obviously, the board's gonna evaluate superintendent and the job that they're doing and whether or not they're hitting the mark in achieving the goals that they set out for the district.
Over here now. Do you feel that articulating a district vision and mission and setting goals is important for a board? And what do you see as your role in this process?
Absolutely important. And I'm aware that you are in the first year coming out of a strategic planning process where you've articulated some of that and some of those goals. Likewise, in Kalispell, I got to lead that effort from the ground up. And we're currently in our first year of working through those things. Being able to set what those priorities are and envisioning how we can be even better in what we do and how we support students and staff, absolutely critical. And I think it takes, it takes a leader who can carry that vision, who can collaborate with staff to work through those goals and those challenges. Is super critical. I also think that there's an opportunity there to come back and kind of evaluate and reassess as we move forward, whether or not those goals are still in line with the priorities that we have as a district. Things change. We've certainly seen that over the past few years where we've had to be able to pivot and do some things differently. And so I think that's a really good endeavor and part of my job in that is giving the board feedback on where we're at in those things. In Kalispell, we actually tie all of our board agendas to our goals and priorities. So all of our agenda items are linked to something and we can come back collectively as a group at the end and say, here's what we did in these areas, here's how we supported and prioritized the management of resources and here's how we supported staff and here's how we envision what education could look like for our students in the future.
Just a follow-up, what if your vision starts to deviate or does deviate from the board's strategic goals? What is your thoughts on that? What is your response?
Yeah, I really don't feel like I should deviate. I think I should be part of the process with the board and having conversations around what does that look like? Because I think ultimately, this is a group of people who represent the community and very divergent and diverse points of view, but collectively come together and say, this is what we're responsible for. We are responsible to develop the educational potential of every child that comes through our district. And so I want to support that and work with the board, not necessarily deviate from.
What is your style in consulting or collaborating with people affected by decisions?
I think first and foremost, you need to have, you need to give input, an opportunity for input. And there are certainly decisions that come into different categories. Decisions about life, health and safety, I have no problem making those decisions and being to the point when it comes to protecting those things. I think there are decisions that we make as administrators that require a lot of input. I don't ever claim to be the smartest guy in the room. I value having an administrative team and a support staff that you can talk to, having a board that you can bounce ideas off of. Because ultimately, decisions that affect people on an emotional and personal level can be really challenging. And so I want to make sure that we ensure that the people have that voice, that there's trust and that there's transparency in the things that we're doing.
Tell us about your personal journey around cultural proficiency and how you would translate that into ensuring high achievement for everyone of our students, including those with disabilities.
I would say the first thing is to recognize that we can always do better when it comes to cultural proficiency. We're certainly seeing that in Kalispell and some of the challenges that we face with refugee families from the Ukraine or Venezuela or English speak, non-English speaking students. We've taken an approach where we have taken a cadre of employees and include paraprofessionals and teachers and administrators and have trained them up specifically in being ambassadors for families and students when they come to our schools and nobody in the family speaks English. And how do we navigate that? And I think when you talk about students with disabilities, those are even greater challenges for some of our students. And so this whole, the ability of a school district to pull in all of those different groups and cultures and backgrounds is super important. We have to be willing to accept and recognize that there are going to be differences. And then how do we build tolerance around that? How do we build equity around that? How do we build inclusion around that? I think all of those different things play a really key role in supporting students. And I'm proud to have been part of some of that work and want to continue to see our efforts in that area grow.
Thanks, just a quick follow-up. You mentioned the word equity in your response and of course, the word equity appears in our strategic plan, but it's a misunderstood word a lot. And I was hoping you could just tell me what equity means to you.
Yeah. I think sometimes we see the analogy of three people standing at a fence to observe a ballgame. And not everybody can see it, some are shorter, some are taller. Not everybody has, everybody has the opportunity, but how you get there is different. And so building supports and scaffolds for students of, with disabilities or students who have language barriers or students who come from a different set of values or beliefs than maybe what we have is the part about equity that I see. That's where we say, everybody doesn't just have a chance, but everybody has an equal opportunity to succeed, given the right supports and the right interventions.
All right, so we have some students where traditional schools do not work. Please share your experience, philosophy and organizational approach to alternative education.
I would say alternative education is one of my passions. Even when I was first hired as a teacher, I taught at a school within the school where we supported students in a non-traditional model. And actually had a lot of questions from students this morning from Willard about my experiences and what I believe. And even just a couple of days ago, I was having a conversation with a mom who, whose child was just entering public school for the first time this year and was inquiring about our alternative education program. And I can tell you that not every student is built for the seven period a day march that we sometimes do in public education. It works for a lot of students, it's very efficient, but it doesn't necessarily support students where they're at at any given time. And we have students who need that for a variety of reasons. It could be because of things happening at the home life, could be for anxiety or depression, could be because they just don't feel comfortable in a building with 1,000 or 1,500 students. They need smaller, more personalized approaches. Philosophically, I think there are things that, you know, when we look at alternative ed, we have a tendency to think that it's a separate campus or it's this thing outside of what we traditionally do. And I think there are opportunities within our schools to support students with alternative education models. And I think you've seen a little bit of that. We can look at things like remote education, we can look at things like competency-based education. We can look at a variety of things, it isn't just about seat time and, you know, being inside the four walls of a classroom every single day. So yeah, I'm a huge proponent of alternative education.
Some employees and community members are very resistant to change while others see change in a positive way. How do you view change in the context of an educational program?
Change is inevitable. And I think if we're in a position where we're stuck, where we say we can't change or don't want to change, that's problematic. And I look at how we've had to change through COVID and pivot and make some shifts in how we do things. I know that sometimes when new leadership is being looked at, that becomes kind of a hot button issue. I hope something like that doesn't come in here to change things. But I think even looking at my decision to apply for this job represents change. It can be, cause of fear and anxiety and a lot of different things, but it also can build trust and promote professional growth. And so I think those are some components of it. Change is a process, it is not a moment in time, it's not something that just happens immediately. It's one of those things that you have to, and especially if you're leading district change or big initiative stuff, you have to have input. You have to, you have to seek to understand where people are at and the things that they're doing before you just jump in and say, we're gonna do this. I don't believe in change for change's sake, I believe in change for growth and greater opportunity.
Tell us how you establish a district budget with the board. For example, how did you set priorities when communicating with staff and community about the budget? Staff reductions, facility closures or extracurricular education programs and things of that nature?
Developing budgets is a unique opportunity in and of itself because the budget pie is only so big. There are only so many dollars that are available to us, generally speaking, when it comes to general fund. And so I think a budget really speaks to the priorities of a district. The expenditures speak to the priorities of a district. And it's no, it's not lost on me that, you know, roughly 90% of all of our expenditures are salary and benefits for our employees. We're in a people business. And so when you think about it in those terms and you say, what's in that other 10%? What are the things that we, that we're trying to operate with? And what do we do when those things increase? And if you think about that pie and you say, hey, I have this idea for a great program and we're gonna insert that little sliver into this pie, you have to say, well, what are we taking away? We already have these great things. And so it's really a process about talking about priorities and what we value. And we value lots of things and everybody comes at it from a different approach, but I think working collaboratively to address what those issues are and how you move forward with setting those priorities is a big part of it. I've been a part of staffing reductions and I've been a part of budget cuts and they're not easy. It's a very emotional, very challenging time for employees when you have to do that. Because when you're making cuts, as long as you can cut the electricity or the heat or the water, you're talking about people when you're talking large-scale cuts. So, you know, we want to be able to continue to do things that have the least impact on students. And that's one of the things that we've always said is what do we do that's gonna have the least impact on students? But still knowing that we have to live within a budget. I think being creative and looking for alternative sources of funding is a really big part of that. I think there are ways that we can look at budgeting priorities and where some of the funds are being used to help supplement or augment what we're currently doing and it's just a large process.
So you talk about process, so just using, say, the end of COVID funding as an example, about a year and a half out, we have reduced numbers in our elementary. What would the process concretely look like to approach that for you? Like what meetings would happen with who?
Yeah, I think there's a, and we're certainly gonna be facing this in Kalispell and I think districts across the state are gonna be looking at the same thing. We refer to it as cliff money, especially when we talk about S, what's the S or cliff? And where have we put resources and programming and supports in place? And then what can we do to augment or sustain some of the things that we've done as a result of that? But I think getting to your question is, you know, from a process standpoint, you start having conversations about what you can possibly continue to move forward with. And are there things that you can shift? Are there things that you can double up on? Are there things that you're just gonna have to ultimately make a decision about? And I don't want to be the person who's solely making that decision. I think it's a collective effort with your administrative teams, with your community and bringing those to the board to have deliberations around what are we going to do moving forward and how are we gonna support our students? And what's gonna have the least impact?
That is a good time to ask the question, how has the education industry been impacted by COVID?
I think we can say in a lot of ways that it was negatively impacted, but I would choose to look at it through a positive lens. And one of the things I saw, not just in our district but across Montana, was this resiliency in our educators and our staff to support students. And it kind of makes me emotional to think about all that we went through to provide education and provide services for our staff and students. I think that there's a, on the positive side of these things, we saw opportunity for change, for innovation, for growth. We saw remote education centers. We saw delivering content to students in ways that we had never done before. The downside to that is we hadn't really taught students how to be recipients of education and information in that way. But I think it was a chance where we saw huge growth in our teachers, in our administrative teams, in our boards and our communities to come together to support what has been recognized now as just a huge component of our communities and our societies, things that we probably took for granted and didn't even think about in times before.
So based on what you know about us, what do you see as MCPS's greatest strengths? And our, it says weaknesses here, but I know you're gonna say challenges.
I've used that word a few times, opportunities, how about opportunities, strengths and opportunities? Number one, people love Missoula County Public Schools. They love your schools, your staff, your families, the students that I talked with. That's a huge strength and very supported by your community. I see another big strength is just the diversity in people and politics and background and socioeconomics and just the various walks of life as being a huge strength, more so than in a lot of other communities. I see the partnerships that you have with your community, with the college and with your businesses and just the overall support that you get is just being outstanding. And so thinking about coming into a community where those exist, it's just, it's great, it's really amazing. Opportunities, I think there's some really big, broad community opportunities that exist when you're talking about homelessness, when you're talking about cost of living and being able to afford to live in Missoula. Included in that is your staff and retention, things that I talked about earlier, I see those as opportunities. I see opportunity in moving the district forward with the strategic plan that you've developed and working through some of those goals and hearing conversations about community-based schools and, you know, just some of those things. I think that's like, those are just exciting opportunities, so I won't say challenges this time.
Within your own educational philosophy, what would you describe as your most fundamental beliefs? And then how do you see those? And then how do you see those beliefs applying to MCPS?
Yeah. I think if, if you were to ask people what they see in me, they see someone who is competent, who is compassionate, empathetic, who is willing to take on challenges, and to lead a district. I believe that fundamentally, it's our opportunity, and it's our privilege and responsibility to get the best out of our students in the education, the short time that we have them. And I kind of spoke to this on the last question, but I, I see that there's, you know, what is valued in Missoula as a community and with your schools is something that dovetails nicely into my approach and how I interact with our, with our families and our community, our students, our administrative team. And I think I answered all of that.
You gave a World War II analogy when you were talking to the kids that I think kind of summed that up. Could you share that with the board?
Yeah. And I can't remember exactly what the question was, but they wanted to know kind of what would be different. And I said, if we're asking questions of our students that can be answered by Google, I think we're answering, asking the wrong, wrong questions. I think we, I don't need to know when World War II happened. I need to know why. And how does that relate to what we're doing in our lives and what's going on in other countries across the globe? And what, what does that mean when it comes back to our community in Missoula? And so that was just a, an example for, you know, where I, I see education going. I believe that we can be flexible and innovative and that we just, we haven't tapped all the potential that we have for what we can accomplish. You're welcome, Karen.
What short-term and long-term strategies would you use to develop a solid professional learning plan for teachers and administrators?
One of the things I've learned early on in my education career, and especially as a leader, is that you surround yourself with people, you share a vision, and you let them execute the vision and get out of their way. They will accomplish amazing things when given the opportunity. And so part of my philosophy as a, as a leader is I believe in flattened leadership. I am not the only person with the answers and love to collaborate and work with a team of people to promote excellence and to do what we do best. And when it comes to those kind of broader, long-term goals, I see, you know, working through, working through what our, our greatest strengths are, and then also looking at what our challenges are. Because when you get into the short term, we set goals, we have a feedback cycle, or a feedback loop, or we try something, we do something, we evaluate whether it worked or not, and then we see, how do we come back to that? Do we, is there a way that we can improve? Or is this something that we can move forward? So those are some of the short-term and, and long-term approaches. But I, yeah, I, I think it just comes back to having the right people in the right place and providing that influence, that positivity, humor, and structure where people can succeed and, and be successful. And give them an opportunity to, where they can try something new. And if it doesn't work out, that's okay. You encourage them to try and do more and do something different.
Just a quick follow-up on that. This question also speaks to, I think, the idea of mentoring or bringing up leadership from inside of a district. And I'm wondering about your experience or instances where that has happened successfully under your leadership?
Sure. Yeah, without question. I, I think I was, in Kalispell, I had the opportunity to kind of grow into the position that I'm currently in, taking several different leadership roles, different schools, and, and at different levels. And I, I'm a firm believer in grow your own. I think there's a, a missed opportunity in, in not seeing that in your staff and, and working with them to promote their growth and give them opportunities to succeed and experience what it's like to be in, in these shoes. And so we've had numerous administrators who have, in Kalispell Public Schools, have worked their way throughout, from being a teacher and a department leader to an assistant principal, to a principal, and back into the central office. Many examples of that. So I think one of the, the values in that is that you, you bring someone who, along, who has the opportunity to kind of immerse themselves in the district and to know what that culture and climate is and, and how they can best represent the school district.
MCPS is very community-focused, and the board wants to ensure that we continue with that focus. How would you work to ensure MCPS continues that focus?
Yeah, I think that's, so, no challenge in that one, right? I think the, you know, for me, coming to Missoula, it creates an opportunity for new partnerships and, and new conversations. Certainly you have the benefit of having a, a college, and you have the benefit of having a supportive business community. And, and that community focus is, is an opportunity to continue the great work and conversations that are, that are already happening. And I like to say, you know, how can we be even better? Where are those other areas that we can reach out to? You know, from an education standpoint, I don't believe that the only time we can educate kids is in the four walls of a classroom. I think there are greater opportunities out there for our students. And, you know, even driving around the district on Sunday, saw all the community outdoor learning spaces that exist at the elementary schools. And I thought, okay, outdoor classrooms, community-based classrooms, there are some things there that, that we can take advantage of. But I want to continue to foster those relationships and just continue to do what I can to keep that a focus for the Missoula County Public Schools.
So I guess kind of going back to COVID a little bit, too. One of the downsides of COVID is it brought out some division in our community. Can you speak to that when the community is not aligned and there is heartfelt differences?
Yeah. Yeah, I know in, in Missoula, we were in a little different place than Kalispell, but certainly experienced my fair share of misaligned community when it came to what practices or what decisions were being made as far as protocols and safety. Had picketers outside my office. I had posters put up around town with my picture on it, basically blasting me for the stance that I took to protect students and, and staff. And one of the things, as we got into some of those discussions and, and even at board meetings, is I still believe there's an opportunity to listen to what people have to say. And I don't think you just discount it just because it doesn't necessarily resonate with And, yeah, and, and there's, there's, had to be some healing in a lot of that. People who ran for our school board, who were very anti-Mica, and people who now appreciate what we did. And even when some of the tough decisions were made, there were people who still weren't happy with, with whatever decision I was going to make. But you give them that opportunity to be heard. You don't discount that, but you still have to move forward with, with making that happen. And I think just being transparent about it and being real and honest with the, with the people that you're dealing with is, is a critical part of that.
Thanks. I also wanted to follow up on this question about being community-focused because community also refers to who's part of the community and who counts and who we value. And our strategic plan and our statement of values has some very strong statements about who counts and who we value and who we will protect. And I just wanted you to speak maybe to the superintendent's responsibility around ensuring that all students, staff feel like part of the community and like what action steps you might take around that.
It starts with me. It starts with what you model and what you expect. You know, when it comes to specific behaviors or actions or even policies. And that's one of the things that I appreciate about the strategic plan that you have, is that it does name those things. And it, and it very much sets you apart in the way that you, you value everybody. And far be it from me to judge anybody or anyone for who they are, what they are, how they are, where they come from. Our job is to take care of people. It's to love people. And whatever their issues may be, our job is to support that. And so, yeah, and I hope I'm answering your question, but I, I think that's a, it's incumbent on me to be the leader in, in that and how that looks to our community and to be very outward-facing in supporting our students and staff.
All right, we've asked you a bunch of questions. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I would say, just based on the questions you've asked me, you've answered a lot of my questions. I think I can see where this board is and where their alignment is and what you value. And so I really appreciate that. I think also just reading the information, you know, about your community and, and what they valued and what they perceived to be strengths and, and opportunities told me a lot as well. And I guess would ask if you could just share maybe a few things that you're especially proud of in Missoula County Public Schools, things that maybe people don't know, would be a, a question that I have for you.
Trustee Witt.
I am really proud of the number of different programs that we offer. Like, we have some ag education, we have quite a bit of trade-type things. There is just a few, like a block from us is they have an automotive program. I'm really proud of Willard and the fact that we have that. Not many districts around the state have a, an opportunity like that. So it's really just the number of offerings to try to get as many students involved in the types of things that they want to be involved in later in life.
Trustee Sherman.
I'm really proud of the fact that we seem to offer our students a lot of opportunity to travel. It's a big world out there, and I love that they can experience some of that and have that opportunity to grow.
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer one, too. It's like trying to choose my favorite child. I don't have one, but my dog. I think what trustee Witt hit on was Willard. I'm very proud of Willard, and our students are proud of Willard. And I think just the programming and the staff we have in that place to really help those students is really phenomenal. I cannot speak highly enough about that program we have there. But I also think not only does MCPS have great sports, but we also have a great robotics team. You know, we have outside-the-box extracurriculars that our students excel in, so I'm really proud of those as well.
Trustee Witcher.
I, I take the younger kid approach to things. I'm, I'm so incredibly proud to be a part of a community that has such amazing teachers, administrators, staff. And what I've seen over the last few years in particular is the understanding that our families need a multi-generational approach and wraparound services for a whole-child approach to education. And I saw through COVID, and continue to see, people who work in this system who understand that it takes more to just educate a child, that, 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 that might be the only hug a kid gets, is when he's at school, or when she's at school, or, you know, what our social workers and paraprofessionals do to, to work with families is what I'm so incredibly proud of and can't wait to kind of see continue.
Trustee Decker.
I'm really proud of a lot of things, too, but I think I'm really proud of our fine arts program and the commitment that this district has made over time to supporting fine arts, both through Spark Arts collaborations with the community, and also through really a flagship instrumental music program that exists. It's one of the finest in the state. I'm also really proud of the relationship that the administration has had over the years with our unions. I think it's a really collaborative and strong and friendly relationship, and I think that's a testament to folks on sort of both sides of that table. And I'm really proud of this board and the way that over, especially the past, say, year, differences on the board have really been shared, aired, discussed. We've come to consensus around some pretty challenging things. And I think it's a board that's willing to be courageous at times. And in this sort of political climate that we're in, I think that speaks a lot to the folks that are around this table, so I'm really proud of that, too.
Trustee Vogel.
Something that hasn't been mentioned, but I know is all in our mind, is the diversity that a lot of our students and families bring. We represent such a wide area of Missoula County. My district in particular is cattle ranchers and one of like a no-man's-land kind of place that often gets forgotten and left out. But those students also come in here and they're surrounded by other students from an urban area. But we have Future Farmers of America and, and the Ag Ed program just to help them identify their strengths and then send them off into the world.
Trustee Mercer.
I'm proud of our voters. When given a chance, they've stepped up.
All right. Do you have any more questions for us?
I think that's all I have for today.
Awesome. So the time is now 9:45, and special meeting is adjourned. What? Oh, do we? It's not on here. Any public comment, but we don't have. It's not agenda item, a non-agenda item. CNN, meeting adjourned at 9:46.